To the April Local Funding Committee meeting. Thank you all for your resilience in terms of rescheduling. We appreciate it. Come on to order, we have on virtually so far Garrett and Dan and Anastasia who are guests. And when we just start to plow through the agenda, I think very quickly, point A, we can review and approve the minutes from three seven two thousand twenty-three. Thank you Barbara for distributing them. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Can I get a motion from the floor to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor of approving the minutes from three seven two thousand twenty-three?
Aye.
Aye.
There any dissent? Anybody on the phone? Garrett?
You look great today.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so the moment that move the minutes are approved. Paul, do you mind if we flip flop the order a little bit because update on the RFP was first? Do you mind since Amy's got to run to the?
That's fine.
Okay.
We got an hour.
Yes, oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, no, 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 no. Dan and Anastasia, thank you for being here. Amy's gonna just go first if you don't mind. You guys, and then we'll come to you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Before you move forward.
Yes.
If we have members participating remotely on our votes, you're supposed to take a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Should we go back and do that for the minutes? I don't mind doing it. Okay, a roll call vote in favor of the minutes. Barbara, you want to go?
Barbara, aye.
Jeff, aye.
David, aye.
Bryce, aye.
Brian, aye.
Marco, aye.
And then Garrett, could you come off mute?
Garrett, aye.
Thank you.
You?
Is there anyone else that's a member of the committee that's on? I only see... I don't think so. Okay, thank you. Thank you Paul for keeping us on task. Amy, thank you for being here. If you want to introduce yourself, thrilled you're here.
Thank you. I'm Amy Soski. I have been your conservation administrator for almost twelve years now.
Time flies.
Time flies. And thank you for having me here. And what I provided, I handed it out, you should have them. It's nothing in particular order. You would, as you're endeavoring to update the local comprehensive plan, you ask kind of just for thoughts. And so it's nothing official. There literally, it's literally just bullet points to, and so you can follow along with what I'm gonna say. So, as I've been here for twelve years, I'm the chief for seven years. I feel like I know the town pretty well and know that, know the tasks of my position really well. So just for the committee's sake and anybody who might be watching, not only is the Conservation Commission in charge of upholding Wetlands Protection Act and local wetlands bylaw and regulations, as it pertains to anybody living near a wetland and their projects that they do, we also manage about a thousand acres of conservation land. We run the town and community gardens. We kind of consult on a variety of other town projects going forward. So yeah, kind of a big gamut of projects that are things that we work on. The majority of it being the wetland regulatory work that we do. So, getting into it, just some things to think about as you're gearing up for your LCP. So the town now owns over a thousand acres of conservation land. And that's town-owned conservation land. That's not selectman open space.
Do you have another one?
I'm sorry, but I can email this to you.
Yeah, we can distribute to the committee. We're gonna put it, we have a Google Drive.
Yeah, no problem.
Again, it's nothing official official, just my thoughts on paper. So we have a thousand acres of conservation land, not selectman land, not cemetery commission land, not even, not counting the Harwich Conservation Trust land. Thousand acres just in my little departments and commissions care and custody. Doesn't include recreation, et cetera. The Real Estate and Open Space Committee has done an amazing job in the time that I've been here evaluating land acquisitions and kind of putting them or making recommendations about where they should go. Should they go for rec? Should they go for conservation? Should they go for housing, et cetera? They really look at parcels that are contiguous with other conservation parcels. Or they look at large parcels that might be standalone, but that provide a high quality of habitat or other purpose like water protection. Continuing, I think key would be to continue to be particular. Sorry.
No, keep going.
Continuing to be particular in the parcels that we acquire.
Go on mute.
Would you just ask those?
Yeah, could everybody who's remote please mute? Thank you.
Okay, I think you got it now.
Continuing to be particular in what we acquire for conservation purposes would be key. Because each parcel we acquire, we have to manage. It's difficult as it is to enforce rules and regulations on our conservation lands. I am a department of two and right now we are down one. So we get a lot of help from other, from natural resources helps, police help if we call them if we've got a necessity. The state environmental protect, uh, police officers do help when we call them. We try not to as much as we can. But it's really diff, it's like a moving target to enforce these rules and regulations. So I'm not saying, I definitely think going forward, we should be acquiring new conservation land where it makes sense to. I don't want to say that we shouldn't, but we need to, one, better manage what we have and just be very careful about what we acquire. So it's no question, I feel like it's a main reason that people choose to live or visit the Cape is because of its natural resources.
Can I ask a question on the top of, or do you want to wait till she goes through? For the thousand acres, how many of them are unique that, how many require unique management? Like for example, do you have some that are quarter acre, some that are half acre? So is it three thousand unique pieces that you've got to manage that are?
We have over a hundred parcels. I don't know the exact number. They range in size from anything from probably about an acre all the way up to two hundred and eighty acres.
Okay.
So and they're all, some of them, the smaller ones where we don't have trails and things, what we do is on an annual basis, we go out and check to see if there's encroachment, vandalism, et cetera. We don't do much with those. The bigger cohesive parcels like the Bellsnack Conservation Area, Thompson's Field Conservation Area, the Texera property on Queen Anne Road, they all have, three of those, three of our main properties actually have land management plans that have been approved, put together by a lot of regional and local experts and approved by the Conservation Commission. So there's management actions in each of those for three of our big parcels right now.
Which, which three?
Thompson's Field, Island Pond, and Bellsnack. And we are hoping in the next year or two to do Robbins Pond Conservation Area.
Okay.
That's another big, big conservation area where we have a lot of our management issues because it's very remote up in Northwest Harwich. So, um, getting back to this, is, by answer to your question.
That was helpful, thank you.
Sure. So it varies. We try to get away, I would advise, and I sit on, I always sit in on Real Estate and Open Space meetings and if a parcel came in front of us for a donation of a half an acre of lot in the middle of like a subdivision, I wouldn't recommend that for conservation purposes, you know? Because it doesn't add to an existing conservation land. It's fairly standalone. Probably another use better suited for it. Health of our water bodies has deteriorated drastically in the last few decades due largely to subject systems improper landscape practices, just to name a couple of the causes. Continuing to strategically install sewer will be key in cleaning our waters. However, homeowner education on what practices everyone can take is also of utmost importance. Reduction or proper application of fertilizers. My biggest, one of my biggest questions is trying to do a better job educating people about native plants that require no fertilizers, less water. They're very beautiful. We have a great list with pictures and conditions that they grow in on our website that we hand out. You don't need to water and fertilize those things. So then increasing vegetative buffer zones to our wetlands will help. We have a fifty-foot no disturb zone in our town bylaw. And we have mitigation measures required for development within our jurisdictions. Really the only hundred foot, this a hundred foot buffer to a wetland, two hundred feet from a river, so it's not a lot. We do find that increasing vegetative buffers to our wetlands is, really helps clean the waters before they get more impacted. There currently is a working group of department heads, myself, Dan Palatier who's online, the Health Department, and golf, working on creating educational materials for homeowners to this effect. I think including, are looking at ecosystem restoration projects as a way to improve habitat and water quality, such as what the Harwich Conservation Trust is soon to be endeavoring on for the Coldbrook Reserve is important aspect. Sewers are not the only answer. Looking at zoning techniques such as natural resource protection districts. So instead of your traditional subdivisions with large lot size, maybe allow for smaller lot sizes with denser development, while setting aside land in a subdivision, you got not fingers of land, not little strips, but a contiguous piece of land for conservation purposes, provides habitat. Something else some other towns do, I think, don't quote me, but I could check in on it, Brewster does, tree cutting limits on subdivisions.
Absolutely.
Just when you, when you, traditional subdivisions, they can go and clear everything, right?
That's crazy.
But if they, the only thing they might leave are these little vegetated strips in between lots for screening. They don't provide habitat. They don't provide, this is my opinion, conservation opinion. They don't provide a lot of value to the houses in the neighborhood. It's very valuable to have a piece of open space that you're adjacent to.
Could I stop and answer your question there?
Yeah.
I think one of the things that as we've really gelled as a committee and we have been working sort of continuously since September and hearing a lot of information and I think we've started to develop an appetite for thinking somewhat alternatively, right, around this stuff? And so, and because of all the pressures that you're talking about, how, like, you know, something like recommending, you know, tree cutting limits or whatever, you very articulately put you're a committee of one. Like, how does that, you know, in Trusso or an office of one? Excuse me, a department of one?
That might be another department.
No, but like, you know, realistically, how is this stuff getting forced or, you know, have you seen the stuff, you know, successfully been sort of implemented with minimal?
If it was, I believe, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but when subdivisions go for planning board approval, it would be like, they would show not just the house and what they would show limit of clearing.
No, we've been impressed in our discussion when, with these very real issues. Like we went through in detail eight weeks ago, the Cape High Commission, like, you know, water. All, I mean, all south facing beaches in the Cape, none of them meet current standards. They're all, you know, in terms of, by the way of measuring that nitrogen, we can argue in how you measure the nitrogen and stuff. But all south facing beaches, not one of them are meeting state water qualities, right? So we're impressed by that. We look at that data, but then any of our regulation in the state, you know, that's over, or in the town, that's here, and what the real environmental problems we're facing are here. So we're kind of thinking about like, what can we do realistically to sort of recommend stuff that's doable?
Sure.
Can I follow up on that?
Well, can I finish my question? If you, yes, but if you had a kind of a magic wand, what are your top three or top four? Top three?
That would be, as far as?
You know, making an impact on, I mean, you're, and obviously Dan and Anastasia are gonna talk about water, but you focused on water and open space for a reason.
Yeah. Wastewater. And anything, anything that we can do to improve our wastewater situation. Be it sewers, be it projects that we're doing like for Coldbrook. There's a lot of state federal aid right now for environmental restoration projects and we are gonna be going for a lot of it. But we don't protect our water.
Yeah.
People aren't gonna come.
Right.
And if people are here, you know?
Right.
You can't go swimming.
Right.
Some ponds in the summer months, you might get a beach closer. Climate, my next one that I was gonna bring up is probably at the top of the list. I noticed in the local comprehensive plan from two thousand and eleven, there, there's a lot of really good stuff. Potentially in the future, including a section on climate change and adaptations. Because that will also, my other point, what I wanted to talk about was stormwater. And the fact that we're getting these higher frequency of torrential rains, we're getting higher tides. We don't, our current infrastructure is probably built to code, to our MS four requirements. Is that enough? Is building to the twenty-year stormwater to the twenty-five-year storm event, which is probably happening every couple of years and not every twenty-five years at this point, is that, is that enough? We're seeing roads, they're not flooded by tides, but they're being flooded by these, these crazy two, three inch an hour rainfall events that we're getting more and more frequently. And we're getting erosion because of those. We're getting properties flooded out because of those. So in general.
Stormwater runoff from it too.
Stormwater runoff from it, which, when it, it can't infiltrate when it's coming down that hard.
Nope.
And it's getting into our ponds, it's getting into our harbors and river that are already impacted without any sort of treatment because it can't infiltrate first. So, um, yeah, so I would.
The top of.
A climate change section potentially, something to think about.
Thank you.
I always worry in comprehensive plans that we stay too much at the general level. And I think it's very important to get specific on some of these. I think the fertilizer is a very tough one. I personally don't think the education is gonna work.
Nope.
And I don't, I think we would need a change in thinking on with our board of selectmen to make headway there. So I'm gonna turn instead to a different example, which is the tree cutting, which I've heard several people on this board mention. When I worked in another state, Vermont, build limits, inside of which you could clear whatever you wanted and outside of which you couldn't clear very much, was a common way of thinking. Paul, Massachusetts, are there examples of things simpler? Do you know? Should we grill whatever consultant we hire?
Many communities have cluster open space residential development bylaws. And, and where I live, it requires half the land in a track, half of the land beside a size of open space. The other half can be used for, for houses. It doesn't always create the quality open space that Amy's talking about. It's often around the perimeter of a development, which is good because it buffers it from the surrounding neighborhood, but it doesn't always create quality habitat. And then there's the scenario with after, you know, you've talked about it at public hearings and the plan gets approved and the developer has a contractor who goes in and clears the whole site out, which is what happened to me in one, and I made them go back and replant a whole bunch of trees.
Which will take a while to.
As much as we try with the regulations, oftentimes the people that are in meetings like this where projects get approved, after that takes place, there's other people that come in that don't know anything about.
Enforcement.
They don't read the decision, they don't know what the conditions are.
Right. And I really, you know, there's a real enforcement cost, right, staff cost, yeah, yeah.
But, so I understand we do have, I haven't read that section of bylaw, but we do have provisions that allow for clusters. Some towns have taken that and kind of turned it up like down and said, you know, well, you have to do a cluster unless we say you can do a conventional subdivision for some other reason.
The densities involved in Harwich are such that the cluster, and the way the cluster provisions are written, they're worthless. They don't amount to dilly squat. So we have to look towards making them stronger. We have the ability to do that in the six ponds district because of the densities involved. You know, I don't want to get too far into the weeds. I guess what I'm pointing out is, I would like to see us, you know, with Amy, with Paul and with the consultant, really dive into the ways of doing this.
Yes, that's what I was saying, very brainy.
One of the most effective ways is to have enough publicly protected swaths of connected open space to make the habitat work. And unfortunately, that means buying more of the land that would have to be managed unless somebody else has a better technique. So I just want to make sure we don't stay too general as we get further into this.
But then Amy needs the help to manage it.
Before I.
Don't worry about Amy. But even.
We do worry about Amy.
Yeah, we do, we do. It's an ecosystem.
Checking to see what Brewster did.
Okay.
In the, in their natural resources protection district.
Do you know?
What they, I remember when I used to live in Brewster, we had this discussion. I was on the Conservation Commission there and attended various of the meetings. They use this example, which really makes a lot of sense to me, it's your hand example. Your subdivision can be a series of roads and houses like this with a little bit of green space in between versus here's where all your houses are and here's where your open space is. Whether that's town-owned open space, whether it's a conservation restriction, maybe even held by the Harwich Conservation Trust, whether it's, the least desirable is a homeowner association open space because that always gets infringed upon. There's a variety of methods to go about it. Even, and you know, in my opinion, this is me, even if it was a homeowner association open space, it's still better than individual lots.
But don't you have to have leadership? Isn't this a top-down as far as leadership in the town?
Yeah.
Wanting to do this and?
These are just.
We're here, Barbara.
That's kind of an oxymoron right now.
These are just my ideas.
No, no.
We appreciate that. Excellent.
But I, I agree with Barbara there. It also needs to be enforcement too.
Yes.
Where I live over in East Harwich, a couple of years ago, there was, if anybody knows Hall's path. It was just cleared. It was just cleared one day.
Yep.
No enforcement, no, I mean, trees are gone. It was like a sixty-foot wide path. And to my knowledge, whoever cleared it, I don't know if they got their hand slapped or whatever happened. So I, you know, I agree with rules, but at some point there needs to be enforcement.
Before we give Ed, is anyone on the go to meeting, Peter or Garrett one and two? Or whoever called, who's our caller, number one, by the way?
It's Jim Nickman.
Oh, Jim.
But I'm only.
We just wanted to take, we just.
I'm only seven minutes away.
Oh, well, join us when you can. We just wanted to take attendance. Did Pete or Garrett have any questions or comments for Amy?
I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Amy, just wanted to say really great ideas. Thank you for sharing.
Excellent. Does Ed have thoughts?
Well, yeah, you know, the, the whole issue with the cluster subdivisions that we have where there's this little sort of lane around, around it. I mean, you know, what I've seen mostly is that people move in and eventually that back fence gets pushed, pushed further back, or a gate gets put in and stuff gets cleared so the kids can ride their motorcycles, you know, around. And as to, you know, enforcement, you know, we used to fund a, a tree warden in town. If any of you remember Link Thatcher, when he was tree warden. A branch didn't get cut, what he didn't say, so. He was, he was pretty strict and, but two thousand and five, we had some shortages and that was one of the programs that technically we do have a tree warden. It's the, as I understand it currently, it's the director of the Public Works Department who has not been, you know, he works, tries to do the best he can with working by neighborhood. But he, you know, his, his brothers is to put things in a shape that it's easily and cheaply maintainable, which means a lot of trees come down.
But here again, I mean, if we don't have the bylaw or if we don't have the regulation to do all of this, then, I mean, no, we're just, no, we can talk till we read the face. And I don't, I personally just.
Suggestion, put a bylaw.
Right, but somebody, somebody needs to get management on board with all of the above because if they're allowed to clear cut, they're gonna clear cut. It's cheaper, it's faster. And that's what building construction is all about, cheaper, faster. You know, get it done, move on to the next site and stuff.
Well, development of the comprehensive plan is sort of the first step in development.
No, I understand that. I said, but, but still gonna be an uphill battle, I think.
Another question too, and then, we have gotten a sense in our deliberations so far in this committee that there may, there may be a disconnect between, an example is in housing, right? That any kind of, a huge percentage of new, of new construction or new housing is immediately sucked up by the second home market, you know, right? And is there something that's applicable in this? Because I kind of get the sense of that there is, there, the, to be sort of blunt, year, year-rounders or maybe primary residents when you're here kind of looking and you're, like, you miss those trees all the time compared to our more seasonal residents. Do you experience that in the Conservation Division or?
Yeah, I get calls all the time from locals, you know, year-rounders.
Not to be binary, but yeah, yeah.
Not at all. But, you know, we have a very vigilant community and that's how I find out about a lot of my enforcement issues. But, but no, I mean, I couldn't, couldn't do my job without it either.
Right, right.
I can't be everywhere at once. But yeah, we do get a lot of calls like when a new subdivision or even just a new house is, is, if the law is cleared.
Yes.
Some, usually I know about them because I either see them in apartment review, even if they're not within conservation jurisdiction, we still have to review and make, check that off if it's not in our jurisdiction. But, no, we, I hear a lot about like when new subdivisions go in, a lot of people questioning, how did this happen? I think there, from what I have experienced, there is a desire from the public to do a better job designing subdivisions in terms of protecting more of the natural resources. That makes sense.
Go ahead, David.
Management and enforcement, you know, as you're saying.
Very important.
How would you compare what you're able to do on town-owned lands versus what HCT is able to do? Does one have more manpower? I mean, is it easier for one entity to make it all within the other?
So they don't have, because they're a nonprofit, they don't have a lot, they don't have as much enforcement ability as we do, unless somebody's directly doing something on their land. But in terms of, you know, mistreating things, they have, I will say that they have a lot more manpower. They have volunteers who, you know, they have a group called Bound Requests that goes and verifies bounds on properties that they, that they own. They have a lot of trail stewards. They have physically in office more staff than we do. We rely on them a lot. We work together a lot because we co-manage and own, either co-own or one has a restriction, one has the ownership of parcels. They have more ability to get out there and check. We have the greater enforcement power. So they will often, especially if there's a violation that's also, maybe it's on their property, but it's within the hundred foot buffer to a wetland, they will call me so I can help with fixing whatever is wrong because we have that enforcement power.
Can I ask one more?
Go ahead, Barbara.
This is actually both of you. Do we, as a town, have an idea of how many potential developable acres are left in Harwich?
Good question.
I mean, the reason I'm asking is, you know, twenty-plus years ago, you kept hearing, kept reading about build out on the Cape, build out here. I mean, this is it and everything, and I'm waiting for that. We're not there and we're having all these additional issues. I mean, does somebody have an idea?
The Cape Cat Commission tracks it.
Yeah.
And the wastewater plan has also, you know, done projections based on the remaining unprotected open space in town. And I think, Dan may want to talk about this when, when he gives his presentation, but they're looking at those numbers again, and I think that's something that we need to collaborate on.
Because I'm just wondering, you know, we, if we're talking about ten thousand acres, are we looking at five hundred acres left as far as putting all of these potential regulations into place and? putting all of these potential regulations into place and, you know, how.
It varies a little bit from town to town, but, but I think the number that the Cape Cod Commission came up with very recently, Capewide, is that there's about fourteen percent of the landmass of Cape Cod that's still undeveloped and could be developed.
That is a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, the moly.
The most recent I've seen in Harwich is in connection with the wastewater plan. They have a very specific build-out study which looks at every property in Harwich. Whether those numbers are really good enough, you know, there's always things that can be tweaked. But that information can be made available.
Would be nice to have a good rule of thumb, I think, a great question, just in order of magnitude.
Question.
Just thought. We're a freewheeling kind of place.
I, I, I got that, it's very different than the conservation commission. Does that, does that acreage include the owners unknown and miscellaneous parcels? We have so many of here in Harwich, is that?
Margot, Margot is the resident expert on that.
I, I'm just curious, um, if our build-out projections include those or not, so, cause it'll.
I don't know the answer to that, I don't.
It'd be interesting to find out.
I'm pretty sure they do not.
There's a lot.
Paul.
So um, Dan can explain this in greater detail when he saw his presentation, but from what he explained to me in twenty sixteen, when the comprehensive wastewater management plan was developed, they did a build-out analysis. And so that might be the most recent and most detailed ones. You should also understand that um, like everywhere else in eastern Massachusetts, all the good land has already been developed. It was easy to develop and it has been developed years ago. And the majority of the remaining land um, has uh, development constraints, coastal wetlands, high groundwater tables, steep slopes, things like that.
Yeah, but you say that, but there's still a lot of development going on.
Yeah, 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 right, well, I mean, that's just in our own.
Hasn't slowed down.
Three years driving around Harwich, you know, which is, but we're all kinda like shaking our heads.
I'm with Barbara.
When, no, when you look at the, I, and I think that's where we're kind of heading as a committee, is like, wow, you look at these very real environmental implications and how do you sort of
And there.
What kind of recommendation, recommendations do you make to try to move the needle on that?
And the issue with um, the owners unknown property is that there's also a certain class of the owners unknown that, that also fall into the concept of class of location unknown. There are, there are parcels or that people have been paying, some people have been paying taxes on that nobody can put on the map.
And they're parcels, some very large parcels
Yeah.
that um, you can, you can point right on the map to where they are and they aren't, they aren't there is no assessors records for them, and they're not being taxed at all.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
Used to be that, that newspaper thing that would came out with everybody's assessment and you'd go through the street by street, just
Right.
come to this section, and it would be location unknown. What?
Existential question. Yes. Amy, do you have any questions for us, we're so appreciative of your time and your expertise.
And I, I think this was, was exactly.
This is helpful. Perfect.
This is very helpful.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to help our.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Can I?
You know, please, just go ahead.
So, I think you do a fantastic job, and although you've been to my house twice for violation reasons, I don't remember now. That was a long time ago, but you found me, so.
You're here Amy, you're here.
Follow the signs, right?
That's right, here's a cookie. Excuse me, your, your staff of one does a hell of a job locating all of us. Uh, but I, I, in, in all seriousness, your, your guidance, your counsel, your, your, how reasonable you were with the project that we did on Route twenty-eight at the old Hamlin's Auto Parts property. We couldn't have done it without you and, and everything that you provided for us. And I, I wanna say thank you to you for that. I also wanna say um, with respect to kinda where you were going when you were wrapping up there, this is definitely not the last you're gonna hear from us. And I think this is exactly what we wanted from you, is come in and just give us like the, the broad strokes.
Yes.
And then, we as a committee, when, you know, we get the consultant, we can start really formulating a better plan. And then you'll probably hear from two of us, where we'll meet with you more consistently to really develop and drive down on what you think should be in this local comprehensive plan, so.
And please think of us, you know, because we, I think we have.
Fondly.
Yes, we have a really robust committee that's really committed to this and we're trucking along, and so if, you know, something occurs to you and we anticipate re-engaging very specifically as we're developing that plan, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
I'll send this to you email so you can put it in your drive.
Awesome.
Okay.
Amy, thank you.
Thanks Amy, appreciate it.
We gotta hang out until six.
Um, Paul, would you, I wanna be respectful of your time and I know the board of selectmen meeting is going on, do, would you like to give us the update or should we go to Dan and Anastasia?
Um, I'm, I want to say for Dan anyway, so.
Okay, perfect. Hello, Dan and Anastasia, thank you for being here. Hello, wel- welcome to the local planning committee. Glad you're here.
All right, I think, I'm hopeful we should be able to answer some of those buildup questions.
Nice.
But before we do, I'd like to just, I guess, start with kind of an initial um, overview of the flow neutral bylaw that we have and how that I, I anticipate that's gonna kind of play into your discussions with the LCP. And what we're thinking about is how to accommodate you guys in the process. So if you are not familiar, the town does have land use controls document, otherwise known as a flow neutral bylaw. This was adopted, I believe it was twenty eighteen, just before the phase two construction started. And having adopted a flow neutral bylaw is what gave the town eligibility for zero percent interest financing on wastewater uh, projects that we're doing. So the flow neutral bylaw looked at a snapshot in time that was twenty sixteen when the CWMP was adopted and established total flow volumes for each of the five impaired water sheds throughout town. Now, the flow neutral bylaw was developed based on existing zoning um, documents and then determined what buildup was based on those existing zoning documents. In addition, there was an allowance for East Harwich for fifty thousand gallons per day for what was conceived at the time as an East Harwich Village District. So there was a desire to do increased density in the area of thirty-nine, one thirty-seven. Um, so the additional fifty thousand gallons of fifty-five thousand gallons flow there was to accommodate that additional development. Now, since that time, um, the zoning changes to enable that East Harwich Village District have not taken place. So we still do have an additional surplus capacity in East Harwich. Now, how I think that's gonna ultimately play into the LCP is, I see one of your jobs or tasks is kinda setting the vision for the town of Harwich. Where we wanna see density, where we wanna meet our housing development goals and things of that nature. And really what that ultimately boils down to with respect to wastewater is, if we're gonna be proposing a zoning change in any one of these watersheds to accommodate one of our housing development goals, that may require a subsequent transition of flow from one watershed to another, which is an action that needs to be done by the board of select. So that's kind of an overview of the flow neutral bylaw, I'm happy to take some questions on that and then um, I can turn it over to Anastasia to go through some of the build-out um, and things like that.
That was.
One of the things that we were, just one last.
No, please.
Uh, one of the things that we were looking to do, cause I talked to Paul and he kinda laid out that the LCP process is gonna likely take, you know, a lot longer than the CW and P revision. So, one of the thoughts that we had was we would identify the additional build-out capacity in different metrics that you guys can then use to do the upper end town, be it number of residential buildings, square footage of commercial space, or things like that, so you can kinda use that in your toolbox to kinda allocate development where you guys see fit. And then that would be then memorialized to how you report a selectmen action. Sorry, my daughter's on in the background.
No, we understand, we didn't hear, no, you, you just gave us a lot of information uh, very quickly there, so we, we will thank you for that, cause that's a um. Zoomed in, go ahead.
Dan, thank you, and I, I haven't, I haven't seen you not be able to answer a question in the last two years, so I, I commend you as well. Dan, the extra gallons that we pay for in East Harwich, we pay for that?
Yes.
So we're paying for, we're for, for, for flow that we are not currently using at present?
Presently, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, kind of a conceptual question, cause you gave us a very specific task, but I think one of the things related to what Amy was talking about that we're all kinda trying to wrap our heads around. When you see an acre in Harwich, you know, cause of current zoning and things like that, and there are these acres around, say, I'll use an example kinda near me and in, in um, West Harwich. There was an acre carved out and it's, you know, it's not watershed, I mean, it was all developable, but say it's a half a mile, or quarter of a mile from the Herring River. It's clear cut, it's an acre, it's clear cut, a seasonal house goes on, probably like a three thousand square foot house, sorry. And, and it'll be used, you know, like this is a second home. How, that, what is, what is that, like, what, what is, how stressed, how stressed do you get about water when you see something like that? You know, I mean, these are huge housing questions, density questions, but a lot of what catches our eyes, like in a member of the community, is something like that. You're like, alright, you know, like, how stressed should we get about that, or like, well, what's the scale we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I, so you're asking from like a water production ability to meet the demand of housing from.
Like, like how bad is that for the Herring River? You know, how bad is that for Belmont Beach? How ma- how bad is that for like Pleasant Street Beach, you know, in the sense of, like, I know it's all cu- I mean, you know, I know it's all cumulative, but like, how, how dire are we here? How is, how big is that, that person is gonna fertilize, that person's gonna, putting in a pool, that person put in a pool, that person's got a water irrigation system. Like, how stressed as a committee should we be about that kinda development?
Um, well, I guess I kinda look at it from the perspect, you know, I guess, tough question. So, I kinda look at individual private property, I try to look at it as individual private property. You know, to the extent that they have property rights that they are entitled to, you know, and if, I think if we, we as a town want to develop regulations and things like that to mitigate some potential effects, I think that that's where all within the town's rights. You know, I think when we look at things on a watershed level, we're, we're looking at them in the aggregate and you know, when we look at the nitrogen load for Herring River, that's based off of um, water quality sampling that's been taken out in field. And then we quantify a basically an average per parcel nitrogen load. So, from a wastewater perspective, we don't look at uh, one parcel is contributing more necessarily than the other, we can't really get that granular.
Right, of course.
We are looking at it um, you know, on a watershed basis, more on average.
No, 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 of course, I guess we're, we're trying to focus our efforts here, right? In the sense of like, like you're talking about these regulations, like how, you know, where should we be looking, kinda thing?
Yeah, I mean, and water, you know, like, when I, when I think of a, a, a vacant one-acre parcel at this stage of the game, I'm thinking of how viable is that for a potential pump station site, because it's.
For an engineer.
You know, so that's, that's at the, you know, the top of my mind, trying to see a, a small vacant parcel somewhere.
Yeah.
But from, from a development standpoint, and even on like the water production view standpoint, you know, and then we are looking right now at installing another water production well, um, you know, we obviously all dealt with the water restrictions last year, so we know that those can certainly come and go um, from year to year. I think as development continues, um, you know, if DEP doesn't grant us additional production capacity for the water system, we may look at, we need to look at how we use the water. I think we have an adequate volume of water to support whatever development is, you know, can be done in Harwich. I think how we use the water that we do have may be um, up for debate, whether we continue to allow irrigation or need to limit that for, for, you know, potable water supply.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, Margot and Ed.
Dan, I don't really understand how the flow neutral bylaw works. You, you obviously, um, in, in, in putting together the wastewater plan, did a build-out analysis and figured out where growth might happen, but it hasn't all happened yet. And so, um, and, and you figured out where you're gonna be putting sewer lines and where you're not. But it, as a practical matter, when somebody wants to um, build a new house or somebody wants to add on to their house, add, add bedrooms, um, how does, how does the flow neutral bylaw come into play? How is it used?
Yeah, so um, let's use East Harwich as an example, just cause we have a sewer system there, I think it's the most practical example we have. So, with East Harwich, um, what we do during the sewer service application process, that application gets submitted to the health department. And the, the health department cross-references against the assessor's database to see the bedroom count for the property. And then, the bedroom count is what ultimately determines uh, the allowable flow for a particular property. Now, I've given a lot of thought about how to try to manage the flow neutral bylaw because um, you know, I, I don't know how viable it's going to be to do on a parcel-by-parcel basis because if right now, you know, we allow irrigation deduct meters, but they're not required. So, there's, there's really no definitive way to tell exactly how much water use is going to the sanitary sewer versus how much may be used outside for irrigation, so um, sorry, I gotta go, I'm dropping out.
We under- we understand.
So, okay, you know, so um, I've kinda thought about doing it on like a sewer shed basis. So the sewer shed would be all of the properties that contribute to an individual sewer pump station. And I can look at that sewer shed as it was in twenty sixteen for water use, and then I can evaluate that against current water use trends. And then if I see um, the flows going above and beyond that, that twenty sixteen volume, I would look then to do targeted low-flow campaigns, maybe go and change aerators. Um, if it does look like there's big irrigation use, we could encourage the installation of irrigation deduct meters because the flows that are baked into the flow neutral bylaw developed in twenty sixteen were just based on water use data. Um, which, you know, was inclusive of irrigation. So I think there's some holes in that twenty eighteen plan that still need to get teased out as we kinda go through this process. I think there's a handful of flow neutral bylaws in the state, I don't know that too many people have had them in place long enough to be up against those thresholds. Uh, but one of the things we did throughout evaluating the build-out um, with respect to the flow neutral bylaw and CW and P revisions, is we also tried to look at like a planning horizon to see, you know, what is full build-out? Is full build-out gonna happen in twenty years, forty years, a hundred years? Do we need to design a sewer system for a build-out that might happen in a hundred years? Um, and we did go through that exercise and that kind of resulted in, well, the twenty-year planning horizon based on historical growth trends is pretty close um, really to the full build-out value, so we've, we've been proposing to keep with the full build-out at this phase, just because that evaluation had those numbers so close. And when we're talking about the design of a sewer collection system, um, you know, the minimum pipe size can handle a pretty substantial amount of flow, especially for a town like Harwich. So, we're not really gonna be seeing significantly larger diameter pipes in the collection system if we look at a full build-out year planning horizon.
Okay.
I rambled a little bit there, right?
No, we understand, it's, it's very complex, thank you. Jim has a question, yeah.
Yeah, to me, these things seem somewhat interrelated in the sense of if you build bigger sewers, you could start having smaller parcels. Or if you said we're gonna have bigger parcels, you could build less sewers, so, you know, it's not like these are independent choices, right? And, and, and then you get the thing like auxiliary houses or whatever they call them, it's another set of, of rooms that are being built.
Yeah, well, I guess what I would say is that even if you take, um, so for example, in East Harwich, there is a minimum ten thousand squeet of, feet of lot space per bedroom, right? So, that look, they're gonna be there, uh, because the, right now, it's a watershed production district. Um, and there's nitrogen-sensitive regulations that are proposed, which is going to kinda combine air, or, or establish nat- sensitive natural resource areas which would keep that ten thousand square foot delineation there, right? So, even if we take a one-acre lot zoning and divide it into half-acre lot zoning, those two lots are still only gonna be allowed the same flow uh, that they would be out of the, the single lot.
I think Anastasia has some data to, you have a presentation for us, thank you, right?
Can I ask one question first?
Sure, sure, go ahead Pete.
I'm sorry about this, um, Dan, can I ask about the water bands, the irrigation water bands and how would, um, how well water is regulated, you maybe touched on this a little bit. But those with wells do not have to adhere, and is that, uh, is there any way to control that if we have to implement a water band again, or did you already get, cover it?
Uh, yeah, so we did look at that, there was. There was the water ban last year. Um, I would say on aggregate, on the overall, we had very great response to the water ban. But prior to, we were averaging about 6 million gallons per day. After the ban, we were down to about 4 million gallons a day. Uh, but to your point, we as the public water supplier do not have jurisdiction over, um, private wells. So they technically, by statute, do not have to adhere, although we would certainly appreciate them adhering to the water restrictions.
In order to do, I own statute, sorry to interrupt you, how not state?
Uh, yeah, so in order to regulate private wells, we would have to adopt a local bylaw that would enable the water department, um, water commission, water department to regulate those wells. Um, so that's something that would need to take place at the local level. But there's nothing at state level that, that allows us to do that at this point.
Okay, and then real quickly, the net, on the net, no net new, no flow. How does the offset process work? I know that, you, you know, I'm, I'm sort of recused on the specific project that you're familiar with in, in my neighborhood. But more broadly, I, I want to ask, how does the town participate in an offset review for a development project that might not be able to adhere to that net? No, no, no net, uh, in septic?
Um, so.
Did just the D E P.
We love it, we love it.
Here comes the question he can't answer.
Or does the town have a role?
Um, so do we have a, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand the question. So do we have a role in, uh?
If, if, if a developer proposes to offset their flow, we?
Yeah, well, so they, they, are we thinking if they wanted more flow than what was allowed in 2016?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so it depends on the extent, right? So if you are a single family homeowner, uh, there's a process within the sewer use regulations and that flow neutral bylaw that would enable you to petition, uh, the limits of the health department and/or the water, wastewater commission for additional flow. If you're talking about something like a 40B project, um, like we had on Sisson Road, which is going from, you know, 10 units to potentially 94, that's going to have a far greater impact on the flow for that watershed. So that would require a larger reallocation of flow by the board of selectmen to support that project. Um, one of the concerns I have with something like a 40B project is my understanding is that they have a pretty streamlined process that enables them to circumvent a lot of the local, um, regulation, zoning regulations, and things of that nature. So I don't yet know how the 40B process's ability to circumvent local bylaws will play into our local flow neutral bylaw. There's language in the regulation that allows us to recover costs associated with an increase in flow. Um, a quick example would be say, what cost it wants to tie in? We are at our 350,000 gallon capacity at Chatham. If we were to then purchase additional capacity with Chatham, I would say that purchased capacity, he would be within by the water closet. Um, so there's, there's, there is language in there to recover costs relative to, but I don't know how effective we're going to be should that project be a 40B project.
So it, so it hasn't been tested, is what you're saying? The 40B, yeah, okay, interesting.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. Um, and I live in East.
Remember, we have Anastasia's talk too.
Okay, well, maybe this, and I live in East Harwich, so this could be, I, I won't take us off into my neighborhood. But, uh, Dan, quick question. Uh, when you're, when you've completed the East Harwich portion of the, the Harwich plan, what percentage of the nitrogen load that you're, you're impacting? What, what percentage of the aggregate load are we decreasing?
Right.
Uh, for, for the overall town of Harwich?
I think we're trying to understand the scale. That was my question about like the rando house, you know, that, that will annoy somebody versus like, yeah, like, what, what, what?
Is this 20% of the town's goal or is this more than that?
Um, so I would say, so we have a watershed permit in East Harwich, right? So we, we all know East Harwich is Pleasant Bay. But there's actually a bunch of subwatersheds within that. Um, and each subwatershed has its, sorry.
We love it, we love it, it's all good.
It's all right.
One second, let me calm the waters here.
Speaking, speaking of watershed.
I've been there so much, I understand that completely. The water, so to speak.
And, hey, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Anastasia, yes.
I just wanted to, so, um, that 55,000 gallons a day represents about 5% of the overall flow. That's the CWMP currently.
5%? Small.
Yeah.
All right, I'm back. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
Um, so with what we completed in the phase two sewer ring, we have removed the total amount of nitrogen we needed to remove from the upper and lower many of the subwatersheds within Pleasant Bay. And for the phase three project that we're proposing to do, we will have removed all, just about all the nitrogen we need to, in the Round Cove and Pleasant Bay subwatersheds. And that is including build out and future development. So it's, as far as a percentage of gross total sewered area, I'd have to go back and look. Uh, but I would say we're probably in the 20% range. Um, I want to say we have a sewer about 60% of the town in total. We have about 10,000 parcels. So phase two is just about 500 parcels. I think phase two is between 600 and 700. So we're probably in that 20, 20% range.
Okay, 20% of the aggregate town plan. All right, thanks. And the other question, and I don't know if Anastasia has this or not, but we were talking earlier about how much, uh, open land is there still yet to develop in Harwich? Just on a, kind of a, a swag, uh, on a percentage basis, is there, uh, what, what's, what's your feel for? How much more development is there to still go yet?
Let me, um, let me actually pull up a slide so we can visually look at some of these concepts.
Thank you.
If I need to.
Please, thank you.
Good segue.
Um, if that's all right?
It's great, go ahead. We can see your slot, yeah, we can see your screen.
Wonderful. Um, and Dan did a really great job of giving an overview of the concept in the presentation, so we could. All right. So there's, can anybody?
Yeah, we need a, we need a bigger, can you go into screen show mode?
I'm sorry, oh, yes, yeah. That's better?
Little bit.
Much better, thank you.
So the, there's different components that we look at for flow. And this is for each of the five water sheds in Harwich. Allen Harbor, Woodmere, Saquon Creek, Pleasant Bay, and Harry River. What's in dark blue represents the town's current, um, current water usage. So that's basically your current development. And then we have allowances to bring us up to a point of projection. And the green is to build out. So the difference between the blue and the remaining components is your, um, capacity to build out.
So that looks like we're at 80 or 90%.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're getting the general idea, but we can't see the specific watershed and stuff just because of the size of the slides, but.
You can't, you can't see the legend.
Yeah, 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 but at the, maybe, maybe you'll be so kind to share your slides with us at the end and we can, you know, we'll, we'll put it on our Google Drive kind of thing.
They're actually, the, the presentation that they made to the board of selectmen is available already.
Okay.
Go ahead, Anastasia.
This is what just came out in the middle of March.
But in most, in most of your water sheds, you are fairly, fairly close to build out with the most capacity in the Harry River watershed.
One thing to note too is that, um, you know, through the acquisition of undeveloped parcels, undeveloped, developable parcels, we can create more capacity. You know, so when we're looking at build out right now, we're looking at build out as on undeveloped parcels. And there's, I know HCT's bought a couple of big, pretty big ones in the Herring River, um, recently. So, you know, those can all result in more flow, more capacity that can enable different changes throughout your process.
So, so is there a reason that you go finish East Harwich before starting up another area? Or, or is, is it more cost effective to finish East Harwich than start the next big area? And maybe that's the best question.
Yeah, well, I guess for, for East Harwich, it was, it might be in the easiest place to rip the Band-Aid off and, and accomplish something.
Okay.
Because we have an IMA with Chatham, they had an existing plant with capacity to accept wastewater. That was really the easiest way, put this way, for us to start making the change. Um, at this stage, um, there's also provisions within the IMA to accept flow from the Great Sand Lakes area. But beyond that, Harwich has to do one of two things. Either establish another IMA with the neighboring community for treatment of wastewater outside of East Harwich, or we would have to consider building our own treatment plant in town. Um, so really up until we have an additional point of treatment, we're kind of locked to East Harwich.
Okay, thanks.
Anastasia, is there more you want to share with us?
Well, Dan, would you like to give an overview of the, the board of select, um, board of selecting's life? So this one's put together as a overview of our project. So we've been talking a lot today about the, the CWMP. The CWMP is a nutrient and wastewater management tool. And it's, it's a document that's meant to support the town's ready for growth. So it's not meant to be a zoning plan, but it is important enough to help us working at growth that that's incorporated into the CWMP so that the nitrogen goals of each of these different water sheds can be managed, um, to meet the overall water quality goals for the five water sheds in Harwich. Um, as Dan mentioned, the town does have a CWMP which was created in 2016. And the project that we're working on is, um, currently a revision of targeted portions of that CWMP that were raised through public discussion. And as Dan mentioned, one of the things, and please feel free to ask questions if we go along if anything, you know, with the way people, the end of the vote will be. Uh, so a couple of things that we're looking at, as Dan mentioned, uh, there's currently an opportunity to plant close to Chatham. But we need to identify either wastewater is even Harwich or looking at partnering opportunities for neighboring communities. Um, there are projects that haven't implemented, including the Life Free Upper Biden Project, which does have a next-gen testing aspect. So that's be the value we need in how that, how we get into the rest of the nitrogen in the town with the results of that project. And the town is, um, this is based in the Pleasant Bay Alliance Watership Permit, where there's a lot of data and a lot of laws that's being collected for that watershed. And we're looking to see if the timing to be adopted based on the findings of that one, as well as the initial sewer implementation. Um, so there's a number of evaluations that we're doing as part of our project. What we wanted to talk with you today is the work that we're doing looking at zoning and build out assumptions. Um, and there's also a, we're also looking at floodwater ponds as well as coastal actuaries as part of this project. So this is a breakdown of the flows from the original 2016 CWMP. And those flow reductions, which is what we're calling called bylaws based around, have to be made to component. Um, so it's based on the current conditions, which is represented by the water use in the watershed. And then the green is at that time, the capacity to build out. Um, so the maximum actuary target that connects the next management goal for each of the five watersheds did a build out analysis and part of their study where they looked at what's the maximum subdivision based on Harwich's current ability to achieve build out. Uh, and then as Dan mentioned, there was an additional factor that was added of 55,000 gallons per day. This gives you an idea of the scale of magnitude compared to the remainder of the flow out for that easy sentencing that hasn't materialized in the zoning. And then additionally, there were four allocations for three areas outside the water shed. On the eight, in Harwich, for the Great Sand Lakes area and the campground area. So as Dan mentioned, um, we wanted to, uh, what does a 20-year planning horizon look like compared to, uh, overall build out? One of the main components in a planning horizon is to look at, is there large population growth in the town? The, the graph on the right shows the population protection that are put together by, uh, scientific institutions in Harwich, right, which shows we have fairly flatlined population growth. And we worked with the former town planner, we're now starting to, uh, go to see what will grow, what is growth anticipated to look like in Harwich. Uh, the town planner did note that there's a 2016 Harwich reduction plan, which had both affordable housing that used to be met. And that the redevelopment of commercial properties, while there was redevelopment, a lot of those different uses have very similar water usage. So for the redstone, we get gold, and the redstone with a similar water usage. Um, and the reason we're looking at water for all of this is water directly correlates to how much water is generated from each parcel. So for the 20-year planning horizon, we looked at how much capacity to build out would be taken to meet the affordable housing goals. And then also included in allowance based on the critical water data, looking at how much that water use is. And if we kept that same projection over the next 20 years, how much do we anticipate we should be focusing there with water, no water usage and the wastewater generation?
Can I ask a question? You, you're showing, yeah, you're showing population declining. I just saw a statistic today that showed two areas of Massachusetts that had population growth. One was out in Western Massachusetts and the other was Cape Cod and the Islands. So I just, I wonder if dynamics over the last three years modified that. So that's number one. And the other is, population is one thing. The other is housing units or physical, um, um, the physical buildings, houses. Uh, so I'm just wondering what your, you know, what the thoughts are and the assumptions on new houses, new dwellings.
So those new houses and dwellings, um, to the extent allowable by your current zoning, are factored into the build out analysis. So that, that is represented in that pathway. Uh, so build out means to the maximum extent of how much can you build by your current zoning? What would that look like? So I would, I would consider that already factored into the analysis.
Dan.
I would also say, do you just, you know, as far as, you know, COVID and its impact on housing, I think that's still yet to be materialized in a lot of projections.
Right.
I think we've currently had restructuring over the last few years, but, um, I don't know if we have trends yet relative to that.
No, and I, and I, I didn't mean to be, uh, it, it was more informative to say that we just need to be aware of, this is dynamic. I mean, I think things have changed rapidly. We've got more, um, part-time homeowners now than we had a few years ago. Uh, so there, I think there are several dynamics that are now impacting what we're trying to face here.
Hey, Dan, we're super sensitive to the, the home work thing. You, you are welcome to step away. You, we, we've gotten, we've, okay, like, or we don't mind at all. And we can finish on with Anastasia. I don't want to, I don't want to browbeat you. We're very grateful for everything you've given us so far, so. All right, but Jim's got a question. Bill, please step away, Dan, whenever you need to.
Well, neither of you can answer this, I guess. It is, our, our discussion today, and a lot of our discussion as a committee, is around environmental issues and water issues and all that. And, and this truly has that ilk to it. But is it also our responsibility to worry about all the jobs that are created by building houses and doing all these things and?
Yeah, sure.
And how do we, how do you do those two together?
They're all connected.
I know, we're talking to the water commissioner right now. I know, we're talking to the water commissioner right now.
Yeah. There will be an element or a chapter on economic development.
So we'll get to that.
Which is, I'm glad you brought it up because it certainly is important because a lot of the, the local native workforce is engaged in development-related activities.
And it goes back to education. Maybe we should get, be telling kids not to learn carpentry, to learn something else. But I don't know. Those are big, those are difficult issues.
Puzzle.
Right?
It's a big puzzle.
Yeah, and people have been making good livings for a long time, and all of a sudden you turn that off.
Right.
But it's also harder to find younger people working into the trades because of the housing situation.
Exactly, that's the other side.
I mean, I think somebody said the average contractor, general contractor in the state is now something like 54 or 56 years old. Like 20 years older than it should be.
Looking at, 70.
Anastasia, keep going. We want to be respectful of your guys this time, so we can free you, and then we'll deliberate.
Another one of the things we try to delve into this plan is flexibility for unknown conditions. But five years ago, none of us would have ever understood the code base. But to be able to review the data and incorporate it into the plan at key milestones as it's implemented. So this is a very similar graph to what I showed with the same build out. And what it's doing is adding those different allowances. So the orange, the original NEP data was based on about 2004, 2007 data. So we worked with Dan to get more recent water data, look at how many houses have been developed since those original reports were done, to bring it up to today's water condition. And then allowing for me to count housing reduction goals and for the general increase of water usage. We took an initial assumption on where those housing development goals could be based on how much developable, the proportion of developable land that is in one of the watersheds. But that is something that can be moved as part of the process. If they're located in a more likely for affordable housing. And then we still have our, at this point, we still have our 55,000 gallons per day allocation in Pleasant Bay. And in the next slide, we'll talk about what that represents and how it could then be reallocated to the different watershed. Any questions on, on this breakdown here?
Just, just a comment that I, I heard the presentation that, that you all made a couple weeks ago before the selectmen, and it was a wonderful presentation. And I actually, it's, it's online, you can, you can go get it and, and watch it, and it's, it's definitely worth watching. But, but the notion of the reallocation of that 55,000 gallons from East Harwich, my, I would footnote that right at this point in time to say, don't assume that we won't need it in East Harwich. Because I think this group is talking about trying to concentrate development in designated growth centers. The, the zoning plan that was proposed several years ago was not successful. That doesn't mean that we can't go back and revisit that issue. So I, you know, I just, I just wanted to footnote that for you.
So can I add to that? That perfectly put. I, so we have about north of 10,000 housing units in Harwich. Is that about right, Dan? And about 4,800 of them are seasonal, if, if I'm remembering the math correct, right? So I would imagine that seasonal housing is less impactful on our wastewater versus having all 10,000-plus units be year-round, right? How do you factor in, and it's probably on a slide coming up here, but how do you factor in commercial growth? And I, I guess another question I would ask is, how does commercial water usage and, and waste compare to, to our, our traditional housing? Is it 30% of, of our wastewater is commercial and the rest is housing, or is it?
Again, the scale issue.
The scale.
We're all trying to understand, like, you know.
Just trying to understand, like, how, how commercial factors into this projection? Because projections are just projections.
So to answer the, the first question about how much commercial was broken to the growth, based on our discussions with the former town planner, where he wasn't, he didn't indicate that there, he saw general commercial growth, what he saw was shipping of properties. So that is an assumption that we carry, which can be modified if there is a delay. So if we want to allow the commercial growth. Any final? Sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I was just pulling up a report real quick. Give me one second. Just in terms of water use, right, so residential versus commercial. We have 9,607 residential water service connections, and we have 382 commercial business water service connections. The residential water use was, for last year, was about 570 million gallons versus a commercial water use of about 47 and a half million gallons. So the commercial definitely is a very small portion relative to everything else.
See, a question? I, I tried to stump you and get you to not be able to answer a question. Pull it right up. Thank you. So is there a percentage of commercial growth that we're factoring into this? Ed?
Yeah.
Well, I imagine, you know, the East Harwich Village Plan was, a fair amount of it was allocated for commercial expansion.
But at higher density housing, too.
Yeah.
Which goes back to your point, right? Exactly.
It all hinges on Title V, too. So whatever would be commercially, you know, available to a commercial property under Title V is what is now available to a commercial property under the sewer use, residential bylaws, all of that. Katie O'Neil would be a much better person to get into the, you know, gallons per square foot of commercial space relative to have Title V. So you got me on that one.
I, I'm going to add, I also think that publicly, our residents, at least some of them that I've spoken to, if not a lot, they, they feel that the sewer implementation is a permit to just grow.
Right.
Yep, absolutely.
Right, there's a, there's a PR problem there. We're not, yeah.
Right, but, but I would argue it's not that. I think the first mode of business, and when I spoke to you 18 months ago, Dan, about this, it's, it's not that. It's to clean our nitrogen.
Right.
That's first and foremost. It's not a, you know, a blanket permit to go build now because we have sewer. And I, hold on, and I, I'm sorry. And I think our committee needs to keep that in mind while we're discussing the, you know, the next 10 years of Harwich and not, and not discounted, but not totally accepted either.
And, but I think I understand how the public can be confused.
100%.
Because there's two, two different things going on. You're, you're getting upset about those trees are cut down, and there's that big $1.5 million house going there, and maybe a whole subdivision of them, right? Because our regulation, to speak colloquially, I mean this respectfully, but just descriptively, because our regulations are one place, and then we have the important work happening with the sewer around nitrogen. And so it's, if, it's easy to conflate, too, even though they're two separate issues.
There are several subdivisions going on.
Right.
Not just one.
Right.
Sure.
So, Dan, you know, as Jeff pointed out, there's 4,800 seasonal properties, roughly. In, in sort of allocating water use, you, you don't make a distinction of whether it's seasonable or a year-round property. Because it can become a year-round property.
Right, and I think something to understand, too, about the development of the TMVLS and nitrogen removal goals and requirements is that we're based on actual water use, right? So although a seasonal property is going to have a lot more water use in the three, four months around summer, we're, we were looking at annual average water use. And that's applied to a standard concentration of nitrogen of 26.25 milligrams per liter. So it's, it's a simple, you know, math problem to determine the amount of nitrogen contributing from any particular parcel. And then that's what went into developing the removal requirements that are within the watershed pattern.
Great.
Other questions? Or Anastasia, is more for you to tell us?
We never quite answered my question, which I got from Barbara. But how much, well, how much open space is there, maybe on a gross percentage basis, is there left to develop in Harwich? Is there 10%, 20% of the land yet available to develop?
I think we have that number. I don't know if Anastasia has it readily available, but I know that was definitely, I think something that you were really a bit on the back, on the back end, but.
So we were very recently saying a list of the open space and the conservation purchases that have been tried by Harwich. We're currently summarizing that, and I can send that out.
Okay.
We would love it.
And then we're looking at the effect of the, the original build out.
We're kind of information junkies right here. And we've been collecting it all and chewing on it, and we would love that, so.
If Jeff wanted me to ask a question, it couldn't be answered.
Well.
Is there more slides you want to take us through, or?
Just, just one more.
Sure, thank you.
And so I just wanted to put in perspective, 55,000 gallons per day doesn't mean anything unless you think of it in terms of what kind of development it represents. And about 200 residential units and 150,000 square feet of new commercial development, just as an order of magnitude of how much development that represents that could stay near Harwich as a possibility, or potentially be reallocated to some of the other waters that support growth in those areas.
And when you, this is a methodology question, it's my own ignorance. When you say 200 residential units, is that 200 on bedrooms? What's the assumption behind that? Like, what does that look like in terms of families and stuff?
Typically about 2.5 people. So the same, um, by the sections and average house.
Got it, got it, got it. Thank you.
Ball or somebody, how, how many, if we were going to actually meet the 10% affordable housing goal, do you know how many units we'd have to create? How's that relate to the 200?
Not off the top of my head.
I think it's higher than that.
Oh, it's way higher than that.
I think we need a lot more than that.
It's over, I think it's like 565 more.
I'd love to see a good chunk of the available sewer allowance to go in that direction.
To meet the 10%.
Yep. At least get us up to 7%.
Go ahead.
And I guess the other, you know, in terms of allocating for future development, has anything, anybody looked at what areas of town have potential for significant redevelopment?
Not to turn it back on yet, but I, but I almost see that kind of as an exercise of the LCP. I mean, outside of looking at just raw land, but.
Yeah, yeah, we take it seriously, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And the number is very different with or without sewer.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. You know, there's some areas in the Harwich Center area that present some fairly significant redevelopment once the sewer line comes here.
But Dan, yeah, just a question bouncing off of, of what Ed was alluding at. If we did identify an area of development, we still need to figure out how we're going to compensate that from a sewage flow perspective in the neighboring town, building our own plant. Is that right? Yeah, and if that flow is substantial above and beyond what would have been allowed, we may also have to go through that process with the whole selectmen to reallocate from what is said, what is said. Understood.
And yes, it takes away from one, right, and give it to another, who is not a vegetable, the two will be one.
So I know nobody has a crystal ball, but since Chatham has a wastewater plant that we're borrowing some of their flow, and we had previous talks with Dennis, et cetera, et cetera, and we got crosswise, whatever, with them, do you have a crystal ball as to when the other phases of town, when's it going to happen? I mean, we can talk till we're blue in the face about redevelopment in the next 10 years, and if we're talking about 50 years from now, before some of these areas may get redeveloped, I mean, that's, that's a different local comprehensive plan.
Are you talking about sewers, though?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean. Dan's going to have thoughts, like, are we going to build our own, or are we going to go in with somebody?
Right, I mean, are we getting close to negotiating, or?
So I have been in communication with staff over in the town of Dennis. My understanding is that they are going for some funding for this town meeting. I also know that they are planning to build a treatment plant to treat about 50% of the townwide capacity in Dennis, which would mean essentially, like Chatham, they would have a pretty sizable amount of free capacity in that plant to handle additional flows. Now, we still need to go through the process of establishing an intermunicipal agreement and everything that goes along with that. But it is my hope that we will be able to be successful with Dennis and partnering with them there. As far as, you know, when this is all going to happen, I would say Dennis is just starting their design and construction. They're probably three to five years, I would say, from being ready to take flow from Harwich, should that relationship, you know, come together. In the meantime, I would say we have, you know, assuming votes go well, there's some support. We have our Phase 3 project on town meeting this spring. That's going to likely be a 24 or 36-month construction sequence. So we're two to three years out there. We also just recently received approval for our ARPA grant for the sewer collection system around Great Sand Lakes. So in my, I guess, best-case scenario, I would see us completing Phase 3 in the next two to three years. In between the time when Dennis is available to accept flow from another part of town, we could then ideally address the Great Sand Lakes area in between. And then where we're also proposing to put a dry pipe in Route 28 in West Harwich, that would be my recommendation for the next logical place to go, which would probably be that five to seven-year timeline.
And hook it up with Dennis.
Come out with draft regulations to shorten our comprehensive wastewater management plan from 40 years to 20 years. They have been incredibly inundated with public comment, with respect to that, and with the change in administration from Baker to Keely. I know they're still trying to get their feet. I had a meeting with them two weeks ago, and they had no proposed timeline for when they thought they might have regulations come at that level of the comment. So it's still very much in the air whether it's going to be 20 or 40 years, but I think forward progress still needs to be, you know, made. I think, on the right path.
So can I, so Dan, I just, fantastic job keeping us current, because from what I understand, Harwich is way ahead of most towns on Cape Cod with respect to our wastewater management plan. And a lot of that has to do with you and your efforts, so great job there. That also keeps us very current with grants, right? Because we're, we're perfectly positioned to be able to request money for our town from state and federal. Is that correct? So I don't, I don't know how that would all play into our local comprehensive plan, if it does or it doesn't. I'm just kind of bringing it up so that we, we understand that having shovel-ready projects and being ahead of the game allows us better opportunity for grants.
Yeah, definitely. You know, we could be getting up to, you know, 35% principal forgiveness on the Phase 3 project due to the infrastructure bill, you know, things like that. So.
That's, that's real money.
The money's out there.
Yeah, that's bottom-line real money to the, to the, to the taxpayers.
I think Barbara has a question, and then Jim, and we'll try and get you out of here.
Sorry, one last thing. Anastasia, on your last slide, you had Witchmere watershed, then you had Route 28, Harwich Port, and you had the campground, all three of those. Can you explain to me, I didn't realize that Witchmere, the Witchmere watershed stops at a certain point, but on, I guess on the presentation, when they, you gave it to count, to selectmen, I don't remember, the Harwich Port, Route 28, I mean, where does that, how does that not intersect with Witchmere, I guess, is what I'm asking. And then the campground is just below that. Do you have a map that you can send us on that?
I, yes, so I have, I don't have it available right now.
No, 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 I don't need it. I just, I just want to, some of them are obvious. That, that one, since they're so close together and so old and everything, is more challenging as far as some of the flows and stuff on the dates on that.
Of course. And so the campground area has very small lots that are hard to find subject to concern, which is why it's included in the centralized wastewater management plan. Great Sand Lakes is to address the depressed water body. And then Route twenty-eight is approaching to the west and south side of the, and then it's been impacted water. But I can, I can send that map around.
Right.
Great.
Thank you.
And just, just to build on that too, while you're seeing, you know, while you're saying, well, that's right in that section of twenty-eight, why is it segregated out?
Right.
The areas like Route twenty-eight, Harwich Port and the campground area actually don't impair a harbor and pavement with nitrogen. They drain directly to the empty sound, so that's why Whichmere is isolated and brought in-house.
Okay, well, I figured that, but when I was reading, when I was reading the, the plan and looking at your presentation, it wasn't clear as far as the areas when you were talking about the difference, different phases for the searing and everything as far as those were kind of, since they don't go into an impaired watershed, they were kind of put to the side. I was just trying to get a handle on the whole thing in that area. Thank you.
I think Jim had a question.
Or just, I just wanted to say something in addition to Jeff about money. But, and because I do think money's emerging and we are in a good spot, there's also money that is really being talked a lot about both at a federal level and philanthropy level of, of supporting assisted, of affordable housing and worrying about where all these eighty-five-year-olds are going to be taken care of that are, you know, increasing every year. So there are lots of opportunities, I think, of being ahead of the curve to raise money for these things.
With that, thank you so much, Dan and Anastasia. We're so grateful.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're spectacular and you have huge allies in us, so thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing your expertise with us. We're very grateful.
Appreciate your time.
Well, you haven't seen the, you haven't seen the last of us, because like I said, we're, yeah, yeah, you know, we're really committed to this whole process and really bring a really diverse and really energetic perspective to it and your work is so key. So thank you. We're grateful.
For what, do it back.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Escape while you can. Thank you, Anastasia.
That's good.
Oh, I get it, man. I've been there, like, that's the worst for the kids like.
I found what I read today, which I'll send to you.
Please.
Axios that I subscribe to. And it shows the Cape growing by five percent over the last two years.
This data stuff. All right, so I think we dug into some really strong data there. We'll put, I'll get all the files because I think we all process information a little bit differently, so we'll put it all in the Google Drive so we can come back to it. Paul, thank you for being patient with us.
Thank you.
Yes, let me turn, I'll turn you, turn it over to you.
I think that the last subject matter is going to be one of the focal points of the update of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan's supposed to be a roadmap for our future and it's to carefully manage growth and development in the future. And that interrelationship between the five watersheds and the amount of flow that was projected and the 2016 buildout and how all that's going to shake out a connection with future growth and development and redevelopment is really going to be a lot of what we're going to be talking about. So it seems like we have a strong team with Dan and GHD and Anastasia's company. They're in the, in the throes of updating that comprehensive wastewater management plan. And so I think their work, the updating of that plan will be ahead of this one, but I think that's going to open up a lot of conversations about what we want to see in the future. The, the comment about redevelopment, redevelopment, we should think about that as predominantly a commercial thing. Commercial properties have a lot of traffic and companies like Dunkin' Donuts will go in and every ten, ten years, you know, gut and remodel a store. This is based on the amount of traffic that's going in and out, wearing things out and them wanting to keep, you know, a look that brings in the customers. So redevelopment, if we think of like a single-family subdivision, there's not going to be any redevelopment. You know, people will tear down a house, you know, rebuild it, but the amount of flow from that isn't really going to change that much.
So what you're saying, just for me to clarify, is when you're thinking of, when you're modeling in our mind for anticipation of redevelopment, we should be thinking commercial, like big commercial changes.
Yeah.
And I don't know, just to clarify, was that what you were asking, Ed? Or you're thinking more of opportunities to meet like housing goals and stuff via redevelopment, right?
There are, you know, there, believe it or not, through the, the center part of town, there are lots of land that are basically either underused or unused that provided for a way to deal economically with wastewater. Short of putting in, you know, some sort of package plant could sustain a, a much larger level of density than it's currently zoned for.
Kind of two separate issues, but I got you, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, most commercial properties are not built up even close to the max extent. We're mostly single-story buildings and two stories allowed. It would double if, if those were torn down and rebuilt, so.
Yeah.
But for example, if, if we did focus more on redevelopment of areas such as Harwich Center or Harwich Port or whatever, combination of sewer and forty B densities could add up to a significant amount of redevelopment. So I think that would become a noticeable number if the thinking went in that direction.
Yeah, the forty Bs are, they're a wild card. It's hard to predict, you know.
They are a wild card, but it's still the sort of tool that this group could suggest as part of the town's vision.
And, and, you know, although most people, you know, wouldn't want to hear this, that is compact development. When, when you build a residential building three stories high, it doesn't have to spread out over acres and acres as one or two-story buildings, but it, it condenses that development to create a smaller development footprint. It's out of scale and much one of the reasons why most people don't like to see two or three, three-story buildings, but that's the, the other side of it is.
Yeah, the compromise, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, it goes back to, you know, do we want to lose our identity as to who we are as to all of a sudden have, you know, four-story.
Scalp compromise, yeah.
There's that, but you know, there, there are, you know, a handful of projects around that potentially are like the Royal. I mean, you know, it was a sort of a failing nursing care facility and there was a proposal.
There are some of those.
Right, which doesn't change the character.
Yeah. Not change the character, but increase substantially a number of housing units in the center of town, which has an impact on the few, the handful of businesses in the center of town.
And there may be some under, underutilized commercial properties too that, you know, you could do housing over or even housing under, you know? I mean, it's, there, there are possibilities like that. Do you want to tell us about our potential consultant and I'll, because I know everyone's going to be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Tell us all the news or lack thereof.
I'm afraid I missed that, but.
No, you have not missed it.
I don't have a lot to report, but I handed out a list of individuals that signed out the request for proposals.
Hope this doesn't indicate that I'm an interested.
You're the front runner. You're the front runner.
Boy, I tell you, I don't understand that.
We're here to make a deal, Dave.
It's about the last thing I'm interested in.
I'll make a motion that Dave.
Sign him up.
So a couple of weeks ago, there was a, an opportunity for anyone who has downloaded the RFP to, to come to Town Hall for an optional question and answer session. That question and answer session came and went with no one coming. I also have not received really any calls, emails or queries about the RFP. These aren't great signs about what the outcome's going to be and I am somewhat apprehensive about what's going to happen. Thursday, the thirteenth, at three o'clock is the deadline for firms to submit proposals. I'll, I'll send out an email on Friday morning to let you know what happened. As you know, given the circumstances of having multiple expired plans, the Housing Production Plan, the Open Space and Recreation Plan, we put together an RFP that said, you know, in addition to just doing a chapter on open space and recreation, you will do a chapter on open space and recreation and we'll check off all the boxes for the state to certify the town's plan. And we did the same with housing. It could be that that was hoping or asking for too much with a budget of $200,000 to update the plan. So we will find out Thursday if that's the case. There are other factors that we may not even be aware of, of how many other towns are out there doing, updating their, their master plans across the state and, and, you know, how many consulting firms are out there that do this kind of work. I've always understood that this, and I think I mentioned this when we talked before, that this is not the kind of contract that these companies make a lot of money on. Usually communities end up kind of squeezing more work and time out of consultants than was originally planned in their budget. And so these consultants have to be careful with their time not to overextend themselves. So there, there, you know, there's a, like a half a dozen companies in the state that do this kind of work. There's two or three that do the majority of it. Some of those firms, the ones that I highlighted on my sheet, I knew the company or I knew some of the people involved, principals in those companies, they were familiar to me. But at this point, it's hard to say what's going to happen.
Are most of these off Cape?
Yeah, most of them are off Cape.
Is the bridge construction? I mean, is that something that's a deterrent? People not wanting to deal with that?
Well, theoretically, that's supposed to quit for the summer by Memorial Day.
It's brutal.
I know, I know. But.
I know, the man's living it. What, so what are, I mean, we're, we're not going to counter.
What's Plan B?
Our chickens before, you know, their hatch. What, what are just, you thinking as some of our options?
So.
So we don't despair.
We might end up only getting, you know, one proposal or two proposals. And at this point, maybe that would be good.
Yeah.
If we get no proposals, then we're going to have to step back and regroup. We will likely need to, we will either maybe change that thing to, to the RFP to not require that they produce certified plans and/or we could seek additional funds.
Right.
It's my understanding that we, we could probably tap into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to pay for that element or to subsidize getting a, a housing production plan that could be certified by the state. Maybe we could do something similar with the Community Preservation Fund for updating the open space and recreation.
Okay, so we have options.
Or, you know, nobody wants to go back to town meeting and ask for money again, but if we tell folks that we tried and this was the outcome and that the economy's changed and the cost of everything has gone up, this included, you know, we, this could be a setback of time where we have to figure out where we can round up some additional money to get the job done. There are a couple of people here that I know that if we don't get a proposal, if we don't get any proposals, I can call them and get some insights from them about what we did wrong.
Yeah.
Or what the circumstances are that caused no, no proposals.
Made us less attractive.
I understand. Where did these names come from? Are these names you came up with or?
In order to get, when we, when we advertised the question proposals, we had a website that, that these companies had to go to. And before they could download the request for proposals, they had to give us their contact information. There's a couple of different reasons why we do that, but, but one of them was so that we, we know who's taking it out in case we have to, in case there was an error or a clarification or a question that one firm asked, we need to be able to respond to all the firms with the answer to that question. So that's why this, this approach has been kind of modernized over the last ten or fifteen years and it, and it works pretty well.
So what's your gut feeling?
I'm hoping that we get one. But I'm kind of, absolutely no calls or emails to me.
Nothing.
Just a yellow flag waving.
Yeah.
The problem, if we don't get any and we're trying to look for funds, the trust can move quickly. The CPC, you, the way they run it here, you're out of luck until a year from now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is, you know, I've always been one to look at some of the out-of-the-box ways. You could move to amend the town budget, specifically the planning budget, increase your line item on consultants and as a funding source, take it out of the, what do they call it? The fund, you know, that you put money in.
Rainy day fund.
No, not free cash, the stabilization fund.
Oh.
So that's all I have on that subject matter and I will circle back by the end of the week and let you know what happened.
No one will, you know, get in touch and I will distribute, yeah, or communicate with the committee as all, yeah.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, okay. And then I think, you know, we've been, is there anything else? I think we digested a lot. You highlighted to us how important water is. Is there anything from your planner perspective that we should digest or you wanted to draw attention to, to what we heard tonight?
No, other than, you know, what I said, where I really think the wastewater, water is going to be the foundation of a lot of decision-making and, and being conservative about how that's handled.
Yeah.
It's going to be important.
I E. not overextend ourselves with our gallons, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, every town has to grow and, and the economy can't remain stagnant. And so these are some of the tug-of-war issues that we're going to have to look at.
Yeah.
Because all these things would, would lead to tax increases and stuff like that. Is that a concern?
So the opposite. So growth and development increases the amount of taxes that come in. Commercial development helps to take some of the burden off of the residential taxpayer. And that's why some communities really focus on economic development because that, that lessens the burden on the taxpayers.
We're limited, I mean, we're not going to chase Target in Harwich, right? So this is like, you know, right, we're, we're somewhat limited in what our commercial options are.
It seems there's a different tax dynamic on the Cape. I would almost argue that we need almost no commercial development because of what the second home market does. Now, whether that's a good goal to follow is another question.
The more people there are, the more demand there are with the services.
But you need certain, you need different kinds of services.
Yeah, UPS and FedEx.
But if you look at the amount of services needed to serve the population that doesn't have any schools, I bet you'd find that the second home market probably helps the town pretty much.
It's an interesting game.
Huge, that's the millionaires, that's the biggest tax.
I come from California and I, I don't understand why a town would, would go after commercial property because as far as I can see, there's no revenue for amenities except for property taxes in California. If you have a car dealership, you get one percent of all sales. And that's sales of parts and new cars and used cars and all those things. And you get business license fees. The state of California has Sears repairs because they operate in every town in the state. Every year they sign a check for a hundred and fifty dollars for a business license in all hundred, six hundred towns in the state, you know? But there's, there's no, similar fees here that commercial development pay.
Some areas outside of Boston have a two-tiered tax rate. The last community I worked in, the, the commercial taxpayers paid double what the residential taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, there's a lot of communities outside the periphery of.
Split rate.
Metro Boston that have a two-tiered taxes to them.
But it's also legal here now investors, I think, right, that to, would be to tax seasonal people higher than.
Harwich has never gone there.
That'll never, yeah.
There's some talk about it.
Aren't the Cape tax rates quite a bit lower than the average?
Very.
Yeah.
We don't know how much commercial is causing that.
All right, with that, before we all turn into pumpkins, but yes, not to cut anyone off, but just our last bit of business, Paul. but just our last bit of business, Paul. Sorry, I know you might run away. I understand. Should I approach or did you want on our behalf to have a little pitch at a town meeting? Or should we wait and see what happens, actually, probably if we get some proposals? How much do we want to say that we're here?
Two suggestions.
Yes.
Usually, as voters walk into town meetings, a table with handouts.
Yes.
And I would suggest a colored piece of paper, update summary of what's been done so far.
Okay.
And, you know, asking people to stay tuned because there is going to be a series of topical workshops.
Okay.
And if the committee wants to get up and do a brief update for town meeting and let everybody know what's going on, you can do that as well.
Okay.
There are a lot of articles and it's projected to take a few nights, so if there is going to be a presentation, it should just be like a one or two minutes, just like quick.
Yeah, 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 okay. Thank you, thank you. I will be respectful of your time, so you could, can we let him go?
Well, I guess so, yeah.
He's snagging over the bridge and come back. Thank you, Paul, very much.
Thanks, Paul.
I guess, you know, the other issue is if we don't get any and we need to look for additional funds.
In terms of our discussion, why don't we, well, we can open it for discussion. My initial thought would be like, we can definitely put together a little flyer that we, this is what we've done, but maybe we want to wait on thinking how much we want to pitch ourselves.
Yeah, till after Thursday.
Whether we have a potential consultant or not, is there some discussion about that?
No, I think we should wait and see on that, but what about our meeting in May?
So, perfect, so moving through that. So, we were scheduled for the second, which obviously we can't do. That's town meeting. One to, four weeks from today would be Monday, the eighth. Presuming we can find a room, is that acceptable to them?
Monday, the eighth of May.
May.
I can't be here.
Tuesday, the ninth?
Tuesday, the ninth would be better for me, but I can make the eight.
What? Tuesday, the ninth would be good for me.
Tuesday, the ninth, I would have to do it remotely, but I could chair the meeting remotely.
Are you out of town?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you, both of them?
I'm flying home on the ninth.
Both would be tricky.
Yeah.
On Monday, the eighth, would you be able to attend remotely?
You want to keep going?
No.
Just say no or eleven?
You don't, no, no, no.
I'm going to be in New Orleans.
Okay, no, you're going to be having fun.
Yeah.
Would the fifteenth suit everyone better?
Or even the tenth or eleven?
Gas Festival?
Fifteenth?
The fifteenth, the middle of the week, I would never be here in person.
Okay.
And as your chair, I do feel somewhat responsible.
Fifteenth works for me.
Fifteenth works for me.
The fifteenth.
Okay.
May fifteenth could work for me.
Fifteenth works for me.
Garrett, I know you're always traveling on Monday. But we appreciate your remote participation.
Wherever you are.
That's what I do.
Yeah.
Garrett.
All right, so what?
Monday, the fifteenth?
Any of it, I believe. Just double-check one more time.
But like, when it's early, it's still hours.
I'd never be here in person because I'm always in.
And Tuesdays, so the fifteenth, so that's select board, right, Monday?
Yes, so let me, so let me tentative, let's tentatively put into the minute. So, we have a tentative next meeting date of Monday, the fifteenth.
Okay.
But I, let me confirm, let me confirm the room, let me confirm the room availability and I will circle back with you on May fifteenth, you know, in the next few days, that Monday, May fifteenth is the day.
Because we, I mean, what we had intended for that meeting was for it to be an opportunity to interview.
Right.
Oh, right, that's right. That would be in place of.
We have to be a little bit flexible with this stuff. So, don't not go to something super important and I will, as soon as I know anything, I will communicate with you because I really respect, I get the schedule, so.
So, you can't be the fifteenth?
Let's just pencil, let's pencil it in, but don't, yes.
May fifteenth, right.
It may be, it may be the interview in place of a meeting.
If we have an applicant. And then still on the calendar, which I think we should leave on the calendar because that's our recurring day and we may need to meet fairly closely depending what's going on, is Tuesday, June sixth. Okay.
June sixth.
So, back on the regular, so to speak.
Yes, if we're not foiled by something, some unanticipated obstacle like we were last week.
And I'm just coming from Switzerland, so I'll miss that.
It's hard, man, it's hard.
Bring us chocolates and you're okay.
As early as we can, we'll try to, we'll try to schedule and I really appreciate, we, this was a much better attendance than I expected. I was worried it might just be me here, but thank you for that.
Okay, we're in our open discussion, so I don't know if anybody saw on the capecod.com website, but the Barnstable Local Comprehensive Plan is out there for commenting for reading and stuff, so.
Which one? Which?
Capecod.com, well, you have to go to the Barnstable.
I mean, which town?
Barnstable.
Oh, Barnstable, so okay. I'll have to look for it then.
Just FYI on that.
You know, the other issue is, you know, if we don't get anybody and the cause seems to be that we basically don't have enough money.
We will revisit.
We'll have to revisit the whole approach.
See if we can, if there is an avenue to get additional funds out of this current.
Yeah, that's why I was asking Paul to kind of share some of his thinking. I have other thoughts, but we'll, as well, in addition.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we have a tentative next meeting date. I will keep you posted when we hear Friday whether we've gotten the proposals. Thank you, everyone, for your really thoughtful questions. You were spectacular.
Now, we need to push the button.
Yes.
No, I need a motion.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Anyone in second? All in favor?
Aye.
And Peter, are you still there?
Aye, thank you.
All right, we have to do a vote.
We have to do it by just technically, Ed, you're called, yeah. Could you say your name in that?
Ed, aye.
Barbara, aye.
Jeff, aye.
David, aye.
Joyce, aye.
Brian, aye.
Margot, aye.
Jim, aye.
Thank you, everyone.